Good evening to everyone. We'd like to formally welcome you to Austin AISD Trustee Candidate Forum. I am Darryl Pierce, CEO and President of SNAP Management Group, and I will be the moderator for this evening's forum. I've served formerly as a member on the AISD Boundary Task Force, also have served, or currently serve, on Austin Public Education's Foundation Board. Not only am I invested as far as a public servant perspective is concerned, I have two girls that just graduated from Austin High last year, one is attending Baylor and one is attending A&amp;M, so I'm keeping all our family resources in Texas. And I still have a nine-year-old who is attending Patton Elementary. So I have a very vested interest in our education system. So we'd like to welcome everyone this evening. We're very excited about the forum and the opportunity to be able to hear from leaders who are interested in stepping up and being public servants in our community. Tonight, we will hear citizens who have decided to put themselves forward to serve our community as school board trustees. Get a few housekeeping items out of the way before we get started. First, like to thank our trustees, as well as the superintendent and leadership team for allowing us to be able to host this very important forum here at the AISD headquarters. It's important for everyone to know that the position to serve in as a trustee is a very critical and important position in our community. It's a four-year commitment, so that's a long-term commitment of your time and sacrifice that you make to serve our community. Trustees put in amazing amounts of time providing their expertise and wisdom primarily to setting goals and targets for the school district, to determine how $935 million will be allocated throughout our district for providing our kids with the best opportunity for quality education, and providing policy guidance to the leaders of our community. We also want to thank each of the candidates too that are here now, and of course additional candidates that will be on their way this evening. This wouldn't be possible, of course, without leadership and support from other community organizations, so we also want to thank the Greater Austin Chamber of Commerce, Greater Austin Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Capital City Chamber of Commerce for their support and leadership in making this forum a reality. The filming, production, and security incurred by Austin AISD are not reimbursed by the district taxpayers' funds, so that's important for you to make that mental note. Now, the format for the evening. Candidates have been provided with each question in advance. With the exception, since we have a little time this evening, I have the discretion to offer a question of surprise, but I will try to make sure it won't be too challenging and something that I would think a candidate should not be prepared to answer. First, candidates will each be provided with two minutes in making opening comments about his or her qualifications and candidacy. Each candidate should explain why they're running and why they believe that they are the best candidate to serve our community in this race. We will have a timekeeper, a pair-timekeeper team that's working before you. At the time when you have 15 seconds left, a yellow card will be presented, and at the time when you have, your time has expired, a red card will be presented. We ask the candidates to adhere strictly to their allotted time and that they not interrupt each other. So I'm hoping that you all that watched the first president's debate, because I don't know if either candidate necessarily complied with those rules, but this is AISD and I'm sure the candidates will be respectful of each other's time and the time of our listening audience. The order in which candidates speak has been determined at random and will rotate with each question. After each candidate provides opening comments, I will ask first question on the list. Each candidate again will be provided two minutes to respond to that question. At the conclusion, candidates will have two minutes to provide closing remarks. We'll begin tonight's candidate forum for District Two trustee position. On my left, I have Mr. Jamie Mathias, and on my right, I have trustee member Sam Guzman. After we complete the District Two forum, we will have two candidates for District Three answer the same questions, with the exception of one additional one I may ask at the end. After District Three candidate forum, we will have two candidates for District Five, answer the same questions. And after District Five, we will have two candidates for at-large District Eight, answer the same question. We will have one slight adjustment in District Five, and I will make that announcement at that particular point in time. Again, each candidate has received the questions in advance to give the maximum time to prepare, because I'm sure our listening audience want to make sure we get the best answers possible. To ensure that all of our listeners can hear the dialogue, we'll be asking that not only the audience show respect by remaining silent and not reacting to the responses. Keep in mind, we have not only our kids here, but we sure most likely have a lot of kids watching, so let's be the best role models that we can be. And so we ask everyone to be positive, and thank you for your support and thank you for your present. We are very excited again to have both candidates here this evening. Now, we will start with our opening statements. Mr. Guzman, you are the first one to provide opening statements, and you'll be provided with two minutes.
Yes, I got you. I should know that already, but in two minutes, I can provide you with some good information, but on a very brief basis. I want to thank the chambers for bringing us together tonight. I can relate to what they do, because I was the, I've been a board member of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and a chairman of the board as well there. Some of my other rewarding experiences on a civic and service organizations include the founder and chairman of the Youth Advocacy Program, in addition to the chairman of the State of Jobs for Progress. State of Jobs for Progress is not in place in Austin anymore, but it was a dynamic program that provided training to disadvantaged individuals. Been in the Travis County Appraisal District, Travis County Grand Jury, Leadership Austin American JI Forum President, Austin Arts Museum, and on and on. I picked a few that I thought would be of interest to you. Esquela Montessori, the Montopolas, I was a chairman. East Austin Optimus Club, charter member and chairman, and a few others. My major challenges when I first came and was elected was having to deal with the selection of a superintendent. After Dr. Ford Jones served for 10 years, we had to go out on a national search and seek a superintendent. That is an awesome, awesome job, task, and it required a lot of time and effort and deliberation to pick the right person. Another major challenge was having to deal with the drastic cuts in education, followed by the closure of the only high school in District Two, which was Johnson High School. It was closed, but we reopened it with the community coming together and being able to convince a TEA that it was more than worthwhile to keep it open. And so I was faced immediately with, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guzman. Mr. Mathias?
Thank you, Mr. Pierce, for moderating this debate, and thank you to the Greater Austin Chamber of Commerce, the Greater Austin Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, the Capital City African-American Chamber of Commerce for the opportunity to participate in this very important community conversation on education. I am the Reverend Dr. Jamie Mathias, and I am running for District Two, because like you, I want to see Austin public schools ranked high in graduation and college-going rates. I am a 12-year resident of East Austin. I am a proud product of public schools, and I am passionate about education. I graduated as valedictorian of my high school class. I possess two bachelor's degrees, summa cum laude, four master's degrees, and a doctor of philosophy in leadership studies. I am an experienced teacher, certified in secondary foreign languages, and I know the challenges daily faced by our teachers. I am also an experienced school administrator, having served for four years as president of a college preparatory school for minority and low-income students. I understand the importance of balancing budgets and of building trust with our community. I will bring to the AISD Board of Trustees a great deal of knowledge, skills, and experience. There is no greater honor than having members of your community ask you to run for public office to represent them. Mr. Pierce, fellow Austinites, I would be honored to share my education and experience with you for the sake of our 86,000 students and their families, for the sake of our 11,000 teachers and school employees, and for the sake of the future of our city and our region. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mathias. This first question will be addressed to you, and you have two minutes to respond. Understanding that no organization can be successful without effective leadership, the Austin Chamber, Hispanic Chamber, the African-American Chamber strongly supports the direction that currently AISD is providing under its current leadership. Based on your understanding of the current leadership's performance, would you vote or initiate any action to change any part of the leadership team or the leadership's direction?
It speaks volumes that our superintendent, Dr. Kostarfen, enjoys the support of our business leaders here in our community. I commend Dr. Kostarfen for her dedication. Being a superintendent is not an easy job. I've served as a school administrator, and I know the demands of such a position. Our superintendent is the CEO of the Austin Independent School District, possessing a master's degree in organizational leadership and ethics and a doctor of philosophy in leadership studies. I want to see all of our AISD administrators succeed. Mr. Pierce, you ask, would I vote to extend our superintendent's contract? State law and district policy require the board to initiate an annual comprehensive evaluation of our superintendent's performance. As a professor, I am asked to evaluate the performance of the graduate students and doctoral students I teach. As an employer, I'm asked to evaluate the performance of my employees. As an elected board member, I look forward to working with Dr. Kostarfen and making sure that she has afforded every opportunity and every resource to succeed. I certainly can't speak for the entire board, and again, the voice of the business leaders in our community is important. I'm not privy to the information shared with our current board members. Without having had the opportunity to consult with our trustees and without having had the opportunity to review with them the performance of our superintendent, it would be premature and unfair of me to say yes or no this evening. Dr. Kostarfen is a professional. She has dedicated her career to education. We owe it to her to help her succeed.
Thank you, Mr. Mathias. Mr. Guzman?
Would you repeat the question?
Sure.
And how much time? Two minutes?
Yes, yes, sir. You'll have two minutes to respond.
Sure.
Based on your understanding of the current leadership's performance, would you vote to initiate any action to change any part of the leadership team?
Well, of course, I do have a lot of understanding, much understanding, of the performance of the superintendent, and the answer to that is yes, I would vote to extend her contract, and would hope that she would stay with us for as long as we need her, because she has indeed made some major gains in this, in this district. Now, is everything perfect? Nothing is perfect. Nobody's perfect. But let me tell you that she, and under her leadership, we are ranked at the top of the Big Eight urban districts. That's saying volumes, because I mean, we're competing with some of the largest ones, Houston, Dallas, San Antonio. She has brought together a leadership team second to none, starting with the chief financial officer, who has brought our budget process and our budget standing. For example, we have AA, AA+ bonding and credit rating. She has brought a COO who has a national, been national, recognized nationally for the way he operates his shop. Bilingual and dual-language, she has brought Dr., and I won't mention her name, but she has brought the professional, that is, the top professional in the state in those areas. So obviously, those people came because they trust her leadership and her ability to bring together this district and keep it moving forward the way she has done for many years. I'm about to be called for time, but yes, the answer is yes.
Thank you very much for your response. Second question, we're going to start with you, Mr. Guzman. It's going to be a two-part question, so I will go ahead and read both parts, and if you would like me to repeat the second part at the time that you would like to address, that I can do so at that time. What is your responsibility as a board member in relationship to the role of the superintendent, other board members, and the community at large? The second part of this question would be, what is the responsibility of each board member to the welfare of the entire district, whether the member holds an at-large position or represents a specific geographic portion of the district?
The responsibility of a board member in relation to the superintendent is extremely important and one that needs to be carefully followed. We set the policy, she follows it. She brings recommendations to us after we give her direction in terms of where we need to go, and she brings us recommendations, and we can either accept them or not accept them. So that relationship is, has to be strong, otherwise the district will not, will not see any progress. With relation to our other board members, it's a team. If we don't work as a team, the district falters. The district does not move forward. Now, we disagree, but we can disagree without being disagreeable, and many times we do, most of the times we do. We have different needs in our particular districts, so obviously, we have to be able to convince, persuade, and ask those other board members to understand our position with regard to our districts. But in terms of serving at this dais, our service overall to the whole district, obviously, is of paramount importance, because we work, we owe it to the community, to the taxpayers, to the students, to work as a team to move the whole organization forward. However, you know, we're only as strong as our weakest link, so therefore, if there's a place, if there's a place that needs more attention, and there's a district that needs more attention for various reasons, we need to pay particular attention and then ask our board members to. My time is up. Thank you.
Okay. And if you could, Mr. Guzman, this as a follow-up. Do you see, and try to be brief with this, because we're going to go a little bit past your two minutes. Do you see any difference between a member who serves at-large versus a member who serves in a specific district? Generally speaking, is there any difference between the leadership responsibilities of either one of those particular board trustees?
Well, I think that the person, the board member that serves in a particular district, in my opinion, has a little bit better understanding of that particular district and its needs, simply because they're there, they meet on an ongoing basis, and they see you at the drugstore, grocery store, or at the car wash, and they interact with you on an ongoing basis. Those members that serve at-large, they have such a large area, it's difficult for them, even though they do interact, it's difficult for them to interact on an intimate basis of that nature.
So you see value in both?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Mathias, same question to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. This is a challenging question with, for many people with whom I've had conversations during recent weeks and months. Through the course of my campaign, I've engaged in thoughtful dialogue with community leaders, small business owners, and parents about this very issue. I firmly believe that the role of a school board is to formulate policy and priorities for the district at large, and through strong governance to provide support to our superintendent and her administration. The role of a school board member is not to micromanage. In my experience of serving on other local and national boards, and in my own study of governance at the graduate level, organizations function best when the board fulfills its responsibilities of governance and oversight, and all the details of management are executed by the administration. That said, this is a political office. Trustees are held accountable to the constituents who elect them. I am running for office to rebuild the trust that so many in our community in District Two believe to be shattered. The oath of office for a trustee is for the entire Austin Independent School District. Once in office, I have pledged that I will hold monthly community meetings from August through June with the members of District Two, and I look forward to the opportunity of bringing what I hear from our community in District Two to my fellow trustees on the dais. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mathias. I'm going to ask you the same follow-up question to make sure the audience is clear. Do you see any distinction in the role between a trustee who is serving the community at large versus one who is representing a specific district?
Excellent question. I see a great difference between them, because those who serve at-large, our at-large trustees have a certain opportunity and gift in being able to represent all of the students of our school district. As a representative of District Two, we focus on the needs of District Two while not being blind to the needs of all of our students. When I speak with members of our community, I liken it to serving in the U.S. House of Representatives. Every representative has his or her geographic area that he or she represents, but let's be honest, we all know that all of them together represent the best interests of our nation as well.
And one follow-up question, and Mr. Guzman, I'm going to ask you the same question. So then, give us some insight, how would you develop consensus? Recognizing you are serving with members who are representing specific districts, and you're serving with some members at-large, so how would you, from a strategic perspective, work across the dais to ensure that you're developing consensus around critical issues?
Excellent question, Mr. Pierce. As members of the Board of Trustees, it is crucial for us to be able to work together so that we can see how it is that we can best allocate the limited resources that we have. Economics is the study of limited resources. We all know this, which is why the conversations held by the members of our Board of Trustees are so crucial. It takes those nine members coming together and speaking about the needs of their communities, and how it is that all of us together can recognize the needs that we have as an entire district, and how it is that all of us together can address those needs.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Guzman, based on your experience, what best strategies have you used to ensure you're developing consensus across the dais? Short response, please.
Consensus comes with the trust that you build with your fellow board members, and it's a matter of, it takes time and it takes effort from the standpoint of them understanding why it is that you are bringing forth the particular issues and agenda that you're bringing forth, and understanding that it is all for the benefit of our constituents, obviously, our community, but ultimately for our students. If you stay focused in terms of who you need to address and who you need, who your clients are, and those are students, usually your decisions that you make are the right ones.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Mathias, this next question will be addressed to you. In fiscal years 2012 and 2013, the state cut ASD funding by $60 million. ASD has compensated for this reduction by making budget cuts and earmarking on cost-avoidance measures. Predictions have suggested that future budgets may require further cuts. Assuming the easy cuts have already been addressed, and the elected trustees of this election will be forced to make additional difficult decisions, on what further cuts would you consider making? How do you prioritize where money goes and what cuts to make? What values drive your budgetary decisions, and what is the largest budget you have directly managed?
Mr. Pierce, thank you for that question. As you know, AISD, the AISD Board oversees nearly $1 billion in taxpayer money. Our superintendent and her administration have already presented a preliminary budget for fiscal year 2013, complete with annual academic facilities recommendations. The next fiscal year will present various challenges and opportunities for the Board of Trustees. I possess an MBA in management and finance. I've had the privilege of serving on numerous local and national boards, each with its own budget. As a school administrator, I oversaw an annual budget of $2.5 million. I've also helped to establish three nonprofit learning centers currently operating in East Austin, each with its own budget, and one of which continues to receive $100,000 to $200,000 per year in federal funding. I'm accustomed to accountability and transparency. As we all know, to maintain their tax-exempt status, nonprofit organizations are required each year to file a Form 990 with the Internal Revenue Service. This is crucial for transparency and accountability. It's part of our fiduciary responsibility, auditing, and oversight. I have a track record in this respect. Whether one oversees a budget of $2 million, or $30 million, or $400 million, trustees are elected public officials accountable for taxpayer dollars. I will prioritize funding to ensure that we close the achievement gap, raise graduation rates, and ensure that all our students are college and career-ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mathias, and I may have missed this during your eloquent words of choice, but what is the larger, the largest budget that you've managed in any previous career or role that you have served in, please?
Thank you. As I said, when I was president of a college preparatory high school, we managed there a budget of $2.5 million, but for me, what is most important is accountability and transparency. Thank you for that question.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Guzman?
Repeat the question, please.
Most certainly will. In fiscal years 2012, 2013, the state cut ASD's funding by $60 million. ASD has to compensate for this reduction by making budget cuts and earmarking on cost-avoidance measures. Predictions have suggested that future budgets may require further cuts. Assuming the easy cuts have already been made, and that the elected trustees of this election will be forced to make additional challenging cuts, how do you prioritize where money goes and where cuts will be made? What values drive your budgetary decisions? What is the largest budget you have directly been responsible for managing?
There are, there's no such thing as easy cuts. They're all difficult. And I actually have gone through that process sitting up there, in the budget cuts that existed, those $60 million, and the decisions that we had to make were excruciating. I mean, you go home with a sinking feeling in your stomach in terms of where is it that you're going to cut? Our priority was always, at least mine, most of us, I would say, but mine certainly was in terms of our people, and obviously in terms of our children. I was always mostly concerned about that, and then after that, we would look at things other than that, but children and teachers and our staff are the priority. Obviously, we have to look at the, we have to look, we have to look at the, at the items that are required and mandated by law, and those, you know, we can't cut. Those we have to, we have to have, otherwise we are not following the law. And other, other kind of auxiliary kind of programs like transportation, which a school district cannot function without. And so I have, I have experience managing large budgets. How about as Deputy Executive Director of the Department Housing and Community Affairs, where I served for about 10 years, I managed a budget along with my executive director of close to half a billion dollars. And then, of course, here, managing a budget along with a superintendent, making the budget. I don't understand budgets. I know budgets. It's not something I've read. I've actually done it. I managed a budget of close to a billion dollars, obviously. So that is, that is my favorite. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. The next question, Mr. Guzman, will be addressed to you. Some schools overcrowded, as you very well are aware of. Others have close to empty classrooms. How do you propose to best manage our district's resources in a time of fiscal discipline to ensure that all schools have an appropriate utilization level? Are there ever any circumstances that would lead to you voting to adopt a plan that would close a school? If not, explain an alternative.
That's probably the toughest question, at least for me, because it goes to the very core of, that's why we exist. And the value proposition there is that we have, this district has neighborhood schools. That's what we're known for, that's what our community wants. That's what our community wants. That's what our city wants. That's what our district wants. Along with that come, obviously, the issue of boundaries, because when you talk about changing boundaries, if you were going to have to close some schools, you're also talking about having to move children, and that's always a tough decision. I would only go there, and depending on the size of the budget, or the size of the cuts of the budget, I would only go there as a last resort. We, I don't see myself being able to go to the place of closing schools unless I, we've vetted that issue completely at the community level extensively and only doing it as a last resort, because I think that's what we're about. We're about neighborhood schools and finding another way to be able to enhance those schools that don't have the enrollment that they should have at any given point in time is what I would do. But very deliberative kind of process that that would need to be, very close relationship with our community and our stakeholders.
Right, right. And a follow-up to that, recognizing it is a tough question, but let me ask it from this perspective and see what your insight would be to our audience. Recognizing that we are dealing with tough fiscal challenges, and we oftentimes are looking at what the return on our investment is from a taxpayer perspective, but we also, as parents, are looking at what our return on investment is as far as educating our kids. So how would you balance that, where we have underutilization, knowing that those resources perhaps is better managed or allocated could perhaps offset the overutilization that we have in any given school, that resources may be more strained? So how do we best try to develop that balance to get the best return to the taxpayers and the best return to the kids that we're trying to educate?
Well, the crux of the matter here is that, you know, when we're talking about closing a school, any given school in any given community, we need to look at what impact is that going to have, adverse impact is that going to have on the academic side of the equation and the decision for our children? So you're talking about how would I balance, I didn't understand the question quite, but how would I balance what?
The needs of the kids as well as the needs of the taxpayers. I mean, the two essentially go hand in hand, right? We need revenue from the taxpayers in order to educate our kids, but yet at the same time, we have limited resources, so we're trying to, as fairly imbalanced, distribute those limited resources. So you have to make tough decisions. So how do we best, sometimes we might see those competing interests, but that's what part of the leadership role is, to be in that position to make that type of tough decision.
Well, I think that, again, going back to the issue of wherever any decision impacts, adversely impacts the academic side of our purpose of our district, then I think that the community, if they're well-informed by us, if the communication is what it needs to be, that they will come to an understanding of us needing to go out for bond issuance in the case of salary increases for teachers being able to go out for a tax ratification election. But that has to be very well communicated and vetted from the community, with the community from the onset. And it takes time and it takes deliberation to be able to do that.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Mathias, same question to you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. How fascinating that our opponent says that we are about neighborhood schools. Closing schools is a serious matter. Recently in District Two, our trustees closed an academically acceptable neighborhood school and handed over a taxpayer-built facility to a for-profit company. Lena Nuncio taught at that school for 12 years before she was told to box up her classroom and to move on. I'm told by her students and their parents that Lena is an excellent teacher. Closing schools is a serious matter. It affects teachers and school employees. It affects students and their families. It affects entire neighborhoods. Yet, we operate this district with limited resources. Far too many schools are underutilized, under-enrolled, and as a result, we amortize the costs of facilities, staff, and programs over small numbers of students. It's time for some serious conversations in this respect. I have both the education and the experience to play a vital role in discussions of appropriate utilization of district finances and facilities. I am prepared for such crucial conversations. In 2005, when a police officer shot a young man in Dove Springs, the City of Austin called upon me to successfully mediate between the community and the police department. If we are ever to have a conversation again on closing another AISD school, we must ensure that we learn from our mistakes, that we have a thorough conversation, and that we explore all possible remedies before making such a drastic decision.
Mr. Mathias, thank you for that response. And one of the things, I can assure you, having served on the boundary task force, one of the things we do very well in Austin is that we have a lot of discussions. So I'm going to ask you to be a little bit more specific for us.
Sure.
Recognizing the challenge, and it's been a challenge, so this is not a new challenge. Give us some insight, what would be one of the solutions that you would propose or based on some of the decisions that have been made? What would you have done differently? Recognizing discussions have been had, because it's an ongoing discussion, and now we're looking for bold leadership to help move us in a direction of developing some solutions. So give me some substance.
That's right. Thank you, Mr. Pierce. And how interesting that our opponent didn't understand that question. Politics is all about competing interests and dealing with the limited resources that we have. How it is that we can best utilize these taxpayer dollars for the best, in the best interests of the students that we serve. What we need, Mr. Pierce, is exactly that. We need bold leadership to help us create the conversations that we need to continue having as a community to be able to see how it is that we can better balance these competing interests, as you speak of them, of how does we balance the needs of the kids and the needs of our taxpayers. It's the concrete solutions that are going to come from all of us. This election is about the choice between two different models of leadership. Do we believe that our trustees are all-knowing, and do we believe in this top-down model of leadership where they impose their ideas on our community? Or do we believe in this bottom-up model of leadership where we as a community are engaging in exactly those conversations, Mr. Pierce?
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Guzman, since you were referenced being the other candidate, I'm going to allow you 30 minutes, 30 seconds. I won't give you 30 minutes.
The school...
Thought I was addressing a Baptist preacher for a moment, right? Yeah, we're going to stick with 30 seconds to respond to that.
The school that he called nonprofit is not profit. It's a public charter. It's a nonprofit organization. It did not close. In fact, it's open now. And I guarantee, if given the opportunity for one year, for sure for two years, that school is going to be a model in this, in this, in this city, and other people may want to do it now. I don't want the proliferation of charter schools. This is an in-district charter school. That board voted 9-0 for an in-district charter school policy, and we proceeded that way. So, and so, the Rocha incident, I was there at that meeting. Mr. Mathias, the audience booed you. I was there. I didn't boo you, but the audience booed you.
Thank you. And Mr. Mathias, since your name was referenced, I'll give you 30 seconds, but keep focused on the timekeeper for your 30 seconds. If you'd like to respond positively to what was stated.
Be happy to respond, because isn't that what we're all about as a community? The challenge is for us to build bridges and to find how it is that we can be positive. And when you have such a tragic event as the murder of a young man in our community, the emotions are high. So as you can imagine, in a gymnasium filled with people, the emotions were high, and not everything that everyone said in that room was popular at every moment. You can imagine the booing of many persons at many times during that debate. We as a community, though, have to be bigger than that and have to be focusing on how it is that we are going to be bringing ourselves together to tackle the problems that we together face.
Thank you. This will be the last question of the evening. I'm going to call it the treasure question, because it's one that neither one of the candidates has had an opportunity to review. So, Mr. Mathias, we're going to start with you. Nearly 30% of African-Americans and Hispanic students are not graduating within four years starting of high school. Major concern to the community, nothing new. Would you put additional resources into improving graduation rates? Where would you take money away from to improve these outcomes?
Would I put additional resources into improving these graduation rates? Absolutely. Many of us have read the report that was issued some three weeks ago by the Texas Civil Rights Project. That report says that vestiges of segregation continue to exist in this community, that there are great inequities that have not been addressed to the present day, Mr. Pierce. On page two of that report, it suggests that, quote, "The leadership of the Austin Independent School District, including the Board of Trustees, has buried its organizational head in the sand on this issue." We need leaders, members of our Board of Trustees, to stand up, Mr. Pierce, and to address those inequities.
Can you give me some insight to the second part of our question? Where would you take the resources from to address those inequities?
Where would we take the resources from to address those inequities?
Yes.
Not being privy to all the details of the budget in the same way as our opponent, it seems that we would have to engage in an analysis of the budget and what are our priorities? Are our priorities truly assisting in bringing up the graduation rate to 90% in our community and making sure that our students are college and career-ready? Because if so, then the question becomes, we should be putting our money there, perhaps rather into other areas. For so many of us who look at issues like this, the question would be, are we putting our monies into direct services to benefit students, which is what we absolutely need in this situation? Or are we putting our monies into things that are not directly benefiting our students? There are many in our community who believe that there are many places from which we could be taking monies, say, at various other levels of the organization rather than direct services to our students, and I would be happy to entertain conversations in that respect.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Guzman?
Well, I would tell you that I would not take it from the, again, the, our people, teachers and bus drivers, administrators, and I certainly would not take it from the campuses and the direct education of our children. And so, it leaves very few places where to take it from after having done the review of that. And so, but, for example, the idea school has been impugned so many times, that, that school is college-bound. That's what it's all about. They have an excellent track record with regard to sending kids to college. They also have an excellent track record with graduating them from college, because they follow them. They mentor them, and they follow them all the way through. So that's one way to increase it. But the other way, if you increase the attendance levels of our children by making sure that they do come to school and gain from what our excellent teachers are teaching them, just that attendance level itself can gain us millions and millions of dollars. So we have to put a very aggressive and comprehensive program to do just that. In addition to that, bringing our dropout students back into school for the purpose of gaining their education also will gain us millions and millions of dollars. And so, what I would like to do, in addition to that, that would bring us more money, is to be able to curb the exodus to our charter schools that are not in district. There's massive exodus. And by bringing them back, again, we can gain millions of dollars in that respect.
Thank you, Mr. Guzman. So since we had opening comments from Mr. Guzman, we will yield to Mr. Mathias to provide us with closing comments first, and then Mr. Guzman will follow.
Tremendous. My fellow Austinites, our city is consistently ranked as one of the best cities in which to live, to start a small business, and to live a healthy lifestyle. We need to keep Austin that way, and it begins with education. If we continue with business as usual, nearly 40% of our Hispanic students will continue to drop out of school. 16% will wind up on government assistance, and only 13% of our Hispanic students will graduate from college. This affects our economic power as a city and as a region. It affects our prosperity. As a community, we need to work to address those issues. I have a very different vision than my opponent. You see, I believe that our elected officials should represent the people who elect them. I believe the trustees should be visible and should be champions of our students and of their families. I believe that attendance is important, not only for our teachers and students in the classroom, but also for our members of the trustees on the dais. I believe in transparency and accountability. Leaders of our community have asked me to run for the AISD Board of Trustees. They believe that I am the right person for this position for the right reason. Our campaign enjoys all 13 of 13 endorsements made in this race to date. Fellow Austinites, I would greatly welcome your support as well. I am a proud product of public schools, and on that foundation, I've constructed an extensive curriculum vitae. I am a certified teacher and an experienced school administrator. I am well-prepared to serve on the AISD Board of Trustees, and I respectfully ask for your vote in this general election. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Guzman?
Thank you. First of all, I'm a parent. I'm a father. There's no substitute for that experience, serving on this board. You cannot gain that anywhere else other than being a parent. I was engaged with my children when they were in high school, all the way through school for that matter, and now I'm engaged with my grandkids. I take them to school most mornings. I pick them up in the afternoon. No substitute for that. I do have a degree, but not even that degree gives me the right, the proper experience or the overall-rounded experience. And so, I have 100-plus hours of mandatory training on governance, budget preparation, and leadership that's required of the board. I already have that in place. 35 years of living in the district that I represent, in the same house. There's some remodeling, but I'm still there, and I've been there all this time. What does that tell you? Stability, maybe, but also that I am committed to my community, have been for all those years. Running a political campaign and campaigning is like the MRI of the soul. Sooner or later, the people will find out all about you. Well, I've already been here. I've already been vetted. Some people like me, some people don't, but I've already been vetted. I've already gone through the MRI, because I've served for six years. In addition to that, 30-some odd years in the community, in different positions and in different capacities. And so, I would tell you, those are my qualifications in addition to the others that I mentioned. Thank you.
To the Austin community, I present to you your candidates for District Two, Mr. Sam Guzman and Mr. Jamie Mathias. Please join me in giving them a warm appreciation. We thank you both for willing to take on this leadership challenge.
I betcha.
And have a wonderful evening.
Let me clean up the mess here.
We now will begin to transition and ask for our at-large candidates to please come forward. As our candidates are getting organized, I wanted to remind you that early voting for AISD election begins on October the 22nd. Election Day is November the 6th, and candidate literature is available on the back tables if anyone would like to pick that up and take it home and distribute and share with your neighbor who may not have had an opportunity to attend this evening. We will be beginning shortly. We will be beginning shortly. We're excited to have two dynamic candidates with us this evening. To my right, I have Ms. Gina Inahosa, and to my left, I have Ms. Mary Petrowzinski. Did I do fairly well? We'll, we'll, we'll work on it. All right, thank you. Fantastic, fantastic. She's too kind. Again, let me remind the candidates of the format this evening. You both will be provided with two minutes for your introduction, and then you'll be provided with a series of questions. Of course, those questions have been provided to you for your review. I do have some leeway, and we'll have a treasure chest question for you at the end, one that has not already been shared, but I'm sure you both will be more than prepared for it. And you will have two minutes to respond to those series of questions as well. That being said, we're going to start this evening with opening comments being provided by Ms. Inahosa.
Thank you. My name is Gina Inahosa, and I am running to be the at-large trustee, because I believe that we have a tremendous opportunity in this city to engage our community in a way that will support our public schools. We live in a city where it is cool to be smart. That is one of our greatest strengths, and we need to do a better job of tapping into that opportunity and using it to make Austin a destination for great public schools like we are, a destination for so many other things. One of my strengths is that I'm a licensed attorney with knowledge of, of Texas law that's applicable to our schools. By the way, there is not currently a lawyer on the school board, and no other candidate has that qualification. I have experience working on relevant issues to our school. I have worked with at-risk youth in my professional career. I have worked on issues particular to immigrant families, of which we have many in our district. I have worked on development, resource development issues. I have worked to increase funding for nutritional support for our neediest children in the state of Texas. And, and I've also worked on legislation and advocacy. Finally, as a mom with a child in AISD, I could not have a more direct interest in getting this right for Austin's children. For that reason, I will be a full-time trustee if elected, and I pledge to you that I will not make a decision for Austin's children that is not good enough for my own child. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mary Ellen?
Good evening. I'm Mary Ellen Petrowzinski, also running for Place Eight at-Large trustee. I'm a parent. I have two grown children who are both products of exemplary AISD education. For this, I am, my entire family are eternally grateful. They attended a total of five different schools, my two children, in AISD, so some people have called our family a heavy user. I think we are. But with no children currently in the, in the district, I don't have any special interest in any one of our one-hundred-and-twenty-two campuses. I'm a former teacher. I'm also licensed as an attorney. I've spent the last eight years directing a private charitable foundation here in Austin that funds educational opportunity for the underserved. The only district we work in is AISD, although we do work with other age groups, some workforce training as well. Through that work, I've developed relationships with nonprofit leaders, corporate leaders, and government leaders across the city. I've managed a budget, and I am continually an advocate for AISD as a place to do business. I've also worked on the AISD Budget and Finance Advisory Committee. I've devoted my professional career to educational excellence for all children. Every child has the right to reach their fullest potential, and every parent has the right to make the decisions about their child's education. What brings me in front of you today is the children. I have no experience playing in politics. This is about children, not adults, and this is about a school board that works collaboratively for all children without toxic obstructionism. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And as we get started, let me remind everyone, while District Eight has a district title, it is at-large. That means when you go to the ballot, voters all throughout Austin will be voting for this particular seat, so I want to make sure that we were clear that both these candidates are representing at-large seat. Mary Ellen, we're going to start our question off this evening with you. The Austin Chamber of Commerce, the Hispanic Chamber, and African-American Chamber of Commercees support the direction of AISD providing under the current leadership. The trajectory that the district is on is being supported by these three organizations. Based on your understanding of the current leadership's performance, would you vote or initiate any action to change any part of the leadership team?
I vote no.
Please elaborate.
I was going through the question in my head, yeah. No, I would not. I am on record with March nineteenth, twenty-eleven op-ed to the Austin American Statesman as being in support of the work of Dr. Karstarfin up to that point in her career. That's a matter of public record, you can look at it. I would continue to encourage what I've seen of Dr. Karstarfin up to this point, bringing her best ideas to the table, balancing a budget in very difficult times with the legislature cutting at last session, the equivalent of about thirty-five-point-six billion, a million dollars to AISD, of the four billion to Texas. She's answered the board recommendations with innovative ideas, progressive education reform-minded ideas. She's moved the needle forward on important measures like graduation rates, lowering dropout rates, and other factors pertinent to the success of all children. Change takes time. Building a base, learning from mistakes, all take time. We need to balance the urgency to fix with the patience to do it right. Constant upheaval and turnover doesn't benefit our children. Currently, I answer to a board of engineers and accountants, who can be quite tough on me at times, but create an atmosphere of criticism, but it's respectful and constructive and growth-oriented. I would bring the same to the AISD board. The goal of criticism is to reach the best possible outcomes and solutions for students. We need to encourage the superintendent to listen to all perspectives, both internally and community-wide, and I support better policies, more systematic, regular ways for getting community input on a consistent basis. I will critique when warranted in a constructive, empowering way. Criticism is not directed toward, criticism that's not directed toward honing solutions has no place. I would support extending her contract.
Thank you. Gina, I'm asking you the same, same question. Basically, I understand the current leadership's performance. Would you vote to initiate any action to change any part of the leadership team or the trajectory that it's on?
Well, I need to say that I'm a, 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 an advocate, I guess I'm a citizen before I'm a candidate. I don't think this is an appropriate question to be asking our candidates. I've raised this previously. There are legal implications for talking publicly about terminating or extending contracts, and I don't think it's wise for any of us to make a statement at this point about the Kar, Superintendent Karstarfin's renewing her contract or any other staff member's contract. To begin with, I haven't been in a position to supervise any of these people. I have not been privy to much of the information that would be necessary to make that determination. And I think it's significant that all the candidates were advised in a handbook that we received from the Texas Association of School Boards that was passed to us through trustees, that we should not be running on the record of paid staff or hired employees of the district. So I mean no disrespect by not giving a more direct answer on this question, but I just don't think it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Let me reframe the question for you then.
All right.
Let's talk about performance. The performance of the district is public knowledge. So give us your perspective based on what you've seen, whether it's graduation rates, whether it's matriculation rates, whatever performance measure you would like to use, what is your perspective about the performance of the district with respect to any specific individual?
Well, this answer could go on and on. That's a pretty general.
Oh, we have two minutes.
That's a pretty general question, just like we don't judge a child with one grade for their entire performance. I couldn't judge the district with one grade either. I'll say that always, of course, there's room for improvement when it comes to graduation rates, when it comes to dropout rates, when it comes to various indicators like that. I think that one reason I was inspired to run is I think we could do a better job of engaging the community to figure out how to tackle some of this, the tough issues that we have in this district. I think nobody is better situated than our teachers and parents on school campuses to address some of our tough issues. And, you know, since you rephrased the question, it's not about the superintendent, I'll just say, as a district, we could do a better job. I have a background in engaging the community in a meaningful way, and I would like to bring that strength and skill to the district to assist with that.
Thank you. And do you think there's anything the district is doing well that you could cite?
I am a big supporter of the dual-language program that the district has implemented at, and, and rolled out at a pretty quick pace within the last few years. It is something that came in response to community requests, and it is great for our children, and I would like to see it extended to, to other parts of the city. And, and, and I know there are wait lists for children to, to enroll, so I think it's something that is good for our children, is aligned with our mission as a district, and is responsive to community.
Thank you very much. We're going to start our second question with you. This is a two-part question about what you believe would be your proper role as a school board member. The first part of the question is, what is your responsibility as a board member in relationship to the superintendent, other board members, and community at large? The second part of the question is, what is the responsibility of each board member to the welfare of the entire district, whether the member holds an at-large position or a representative of a specific geographic portion of the district?
The board's primary responsibility to the community is to be a link between the district and the community. Board members are uniquely situated in that they are elected from within community, so they have those ties to, to foster a healthy relationship between the community and the district. One of the strengths I bring is an extensive, broad-based, a group of supporters, evidenced in part by my supporter list, and, and this is the result of many years of working within the community, building trust across, across the district. And so if elected, I will be able to go back to these relationships of trust and, and consult supporters and the community when to inform decisions that need to be made about the district, and it's also important because it's essential to get buy-in for some tough decisions that often have to be made at the district level. As for the relationship between the trustees and the superintendent, and, and did you ask trustees amongst one another?
Yes.
Okay. You know, primarily, and first and foremost, it needs to be a relationship of respect, regardless of whether we agree or disagree with one another. We always need to remember that we need to engage respectfully. I think also in some circumstances, it's a relationship of deference. My doctorate is not in education, it is in the law, and so I would not presume to tell the superintendent which reading programs are, are best used to get our children reading at grade level. The role of a trustee is to set policy and, and expect, clear expectations for the superintendent, and then to hold the superintendent accountable to meeting those, those goals. And also, when it comes to trustees' relationship with one another in some areas, deference needs to be afforded as well. For example, I do not live in East Austin, and so unless there were prevailing evidence otherwise, I would need to defer to a district representative from East Austin in, in whose opinion it was that the sentiment of the community was, was such when it came to their children.
Okay, thank you. And if you could be brief in drawing a delineation for the audience, please. Recognizing you're running for an at-large seat. Do you see your role to be any different other than the basic job requirements that come with serving as a trustee than you would see from your fellow trustees that would be representing specific districts?
I do, and the way I see it, you get to take a, the big-picture approach to policy and figure out what is it as a city we would like to see in our public schools. I think it, it's an, it, it, it's something that is a unique advantage, and, so, yeah, so it, it is somewhat different than a district position.
Thank you very much. Mary Ellen, same question to you.
Okay, so likewise, I, I see the role of the at-large position as a broad, whole-district perspective, necessitating a balanced voice who's able to listen to all. I bring broad experience base as a parent in, in certain schools, as a teacher, and as an executive director that's worked in certain other schools. I think the at-large position needs to encourage fellow board members to develop regular, systematic ways to hear from parents and families in their district, so that they are reporting in that information from the single-member districts to the board at-large. And they need to, we need to have policies set so that this information is reported through consolidated formats and scheduled meetings for the purpose of honing solutions through our budget priorities. That's what we do, but we need that information to come in from all the single-member districts. It's incumbent upon the at-large position to strongly represent equity across the district and collaboration with and understand each single-member perspective. As an at-large member, I would strive to be a leader in collaboration across the board, much as I have done in my professional roles, and I believe we move further forward as a whole than we ever can separately.
All right, thank you. We'll move to our third question. We're going to start with you. In fiscal years 2012 and 2013, the state cut AISD's funding by sixty million dollars. AISD had to compensate for the reduction by making budget cuts and embarking on a cost of on its measures. Predictions have suggested that future budgets may require further cuts, assuming the easy cuts have already been addressed and that the elected trustees of this election will be forced to make additional difficult decisions on what further cuts should be made. How do you prioritize where the money goes, what cuts will be made, what values would you use to drive your budgetary decisions, and what is the largest budget you have had the responsibility for directly managing?
Sure. Let me address, too, that I used the thirty-five-point-six-million-dollar figure before, and you added in the average daily attendance change in the funding formula, and that's why you have the sixty total, so.
Right.
I know those two figures.
Always open to education.
So my priorities are clear on, on those budget priorities. I think that teachers and principals are our most valuable resource, and I think that when we create a culture of valuing those teachers, first through remuneration and budget priorities, and also with a culture of respect and listening, and further professionally developing and supporting those teachers, our dollars go as far as they possibly can. I think that's the best investment you can make in the district. So that is clearly my number-one priority. The second priority I have is for high-performing options, because I, as, as a parent of two children, I know that we don't all learn alike, we don't grow alike or develop the same interests. and it's important to have a myriad of high-performing, strong options across the district. Programs that allow all to reach their highest potential is the strength of a large urban district like ours. We must manage wisely and be open to high-performing options. As far as the budget that I currently manage, which is the largest budget I have managed in my professional career, it's a $1 million grant budget of approximately, as high as $22 million endowment.
Okay, thank you. And a follow-up question, can you give us some insight to your thinking process on what is a value? Is there any particular value you can think of that you use to drive making tough budgetary decisions?
For me, absolutely, it's the child and the teaching quality to the child. So, yeah, as I heard Sam say, I think, you know, I come at that with a parental perspective, and ultimately, any investment we can make in strengthening our teachers will be the best thing we can do for our children.
Thank you. Gina, over to you, same question.
Well, first, I think it's important to say that there were not easy cuts made. We laid off over 1,000 employees in this district. It hurt a lot of families, it hurt a lot of individuals, and it hurt a lot of schools. So, I don't, I take issue with that statement. And secondly, I think it's important that we don't accept the inevitability of further cuts. We cannot continue to keep slashing education in this state and think that we can still have a successful economy, a successful workforce. And so, I would like to challenge this group. There are many from within the business community in this group who have a unique power to influence those decisions at the state level, and I think if I communicate anything today to the business community in Austin, it's that we need you to continue advocating for education in the state, and in fact, to step up that advocacy, because you're our best last hope to do that, frankly. Assuming that we have to make further cuts, I think it's important that we start by talking to the people we hire and that we entrust to educate our children at the campus level and ask, what are the priorities that need funding on your campus? And the parents as well, by the way, because I think nobody is better situated, again, to understand what needs funding than those who are at the campus level. I had a teacher crying to me last week who said, "I can't continue to do this, I'm pulled in too many different directions. The district sends these programs to our campus that we don't ask for. What we need is in getting funding." And she thinks that she could continue to work as a teacher, though she loves teaching. So, I think that's an example of something that we need to work on, and all budgeting decisions need to begin with these conversations at the campus level.
Thank you. Can you give us some insight on what is the largest budget you have directly been responsible for managing?
I've been on the executive team and on the board of nonprofits for organizations ranging from $500,000 to $50 million. As a litigator, I've overseen millions of dollars in client assets, but that being said, I don't presume to have the experience of being entrusted with a $1 billion budget of taxpayer money. I think that is an awesome responsibility and one that I do not take lightly. Obviously, there will be a learning curve in figuring that out. As a full-time trustee, I would be prepared to immerse myself in all the relevant literature necessary and take the time to get the information I need. I've already begun the job of consulting some leading experts in the state on school finance.
And one other brief, just a brief follow-up question. Recognizing that no budget cut may not necessarily be easy, but the next ones definitely will be a little bit more challenging, is there one core value you could leave us with that you would use to help drive how you would make that decision or approach that process?
The core value is getting input from the people we hire and we entrust to educate our children.
Okay, thank you. Next question, we're going to start with you. Some schools are overcrowded, with Gina, others have close-to-empty classrooms. How do we best manage our resources in the time of fiscal discipline to ensure that all schools have an appropriate utilization level? Are there ever any circumstance that you would lead, to lead you to voting to adopt a plan that would close a school if not explaining the alternative solution?
I think here too, it's important that we begin, we talk about this in terms of community input. I mean, I'm speaking to members of the business community here. While our schools are not businesses, there are certain business practices or values that we can adopt to inform how we operate with schools. It is important that we ask stakeholders, constituents, clients, what it is they want in our schools. So, I'll give you an example of this playing out in a positive way. We had two underutilized schools, Becker and Ridgetop, that were proposed for several years for closure in the district, and rather than close those schools, the district decided in response to community demand to put in dual-language schools in those campuses. Those dual-language schools now have wait lists, and they're hard to get into. I know because I was on those wait lists for my child. I think that's an excellent example of utilizing our facilities responsibly, fiscally responsibly, being responsive to our constituents, our clients, and a decision that is aligned, again, with our mission and our strategic plan.
All right. Mary Ellen, same question to you.
Sure. I would agree, no one wants to close a school. My focus is on equity. Where you live or loudest voice should not determine if a school remains open or closed, and my support of a myriad of options across the district. We have good examples of where we've had underutilized facilities, and we've brought in stellar programming like the dual-language, like the magnet, and utilized the facility to its highest potential, and that's what I would encourage.
And could you give me perhaps, in the listening audience, any example of what other type of needs that you would think like that for the schools we have that are underutilized? Now, keep in mind, we have some that are overutilized as well.
That's right.
And so that's a delicate balance. So even if we are addressing the underutilization, how do we address the overutilization?
Sure. Well, in addition to what I just mentioned, I think to the district, again, policy-wise, needs to be looking at a systematic review of facilities, enrollment at every school in the district on a regular basis, and keeping an inventory and a report of that that is made public, so that everyone is in the know as to the situation. And I think that eases tension because it's information exchanged amongst all of us.
Gina, I'm going to ask you that same follow-up question about overutilization. Any strategy or thought or insight you can provide us how you would approach, because I think your examples also were dealing with underutilization.
So sometimes you need to build more schools, right? And I'm proud to have been part of a coalition that worked on the last bond campaign to buy property in South Austin to build another campus. So, I think there too, it's important that trustees have relationships within the community to be able to rally support to, for, like a bond election, when we need to build new schools.
Okay, all right, thank you. And our last question for the evening. How do you define teacher quality, and what can AISD do to improve its teacher quality and leadership pipeline? And we're going to start that question with you, Mary Ellen. Yes?
So I think teacher quality is measured in a variety of factors. You know, we hear all the talk about the high-stakes testing, and certainly, I would like to see when it comes to evaluating and quantifying our teachers, we are taking the stress and the emphasis off that mechanism of doing so. And so, I mean, certainly, that can be a part of it, but not in the way it's used today. So, you know, we do the benchmark testing at the beginning of the year, and I think it's very important to note where a student's class is ranging, right? And if that teacher is able to take a majority of his or her students a year ahead of where they are at the starting point, then that's a good measure of quality, and if he or she does that on a regular basis. I think, and even deeper than that, we need to be communicating with our teachers regularly. We have programs in the district now where face-to-face talking, what's working, what isn't, and getting them the support they need for the things that they may not be as successful on as they would like to be. So, I think a creative approach to teacher evaluation is very important.
Okay, thank you. Gina?
I'm sorry, will you repeat the question?
I certainly will. How do you define teacher quality, and what can AISD do to improve its teacher and leadership pipeline?
The district has supported a national accreditation program for our district's teachers. That is an excellent program that is very challenging for teachers to, they take a test, and they have to study for a year to become a nationally accredited teacher. I think that the district is right to encourage that, and I think that we need to do more of that. I think it's important that we have incentives to retain our teachers. We have the problem of being able to retain good teachers for a variety of reasons. One, because of pay, also because it's not an easy job, and good teachers are pulled to other districts and to other professions. We need to pay teachers better, and we need to give teachers better benefits. I know examples of teachers who have gone to work for private schools because they couldn't afford to have their, to pay for their child's health care benefits with what AISD was offering. So that's unfortunate, and we need to fix that. We also can do better to give teachers a quality work experience. I've had a supporter suggest to me we should have a committee on workplace quality for teachers. I think that's a great idea. That goes a long way with retaining good teachers. Teachers choose teaching because it's a vocation. They don't choose it to get rich. It's hard work, and they feel called to do it, and I think we need to recognize the value in that.
Okay, thank you very much. Austin community, I present to you your candidates for District Eight, Mary Ellen Petrazinski and Gina Anna Hosa. Please join me in giving them a round of applause. We thank you both for your leadership and desire to serve the Austin community. Thank you, and have a great evening. Now, we will have our District Five candidate who will be joining me for discussion this evening.
Let me quickly apologize and charge it to my mind and not to my heart, the last candidates, I did not provide him with an opportunity to make closing comments, but maybe some of you all didn't even miss that, but at least I wanted to let you know, please charge it to my mind and not to my heart. But that being said, we are now ready to have a wonderful discussion with our District Five candidates. As most of you hopefully probably have already been watching, I'm Darryl Pierce, it's a pleasure to be your moderator this evening. Our candidates we have with us this evening is Amber Ellens, and we have to my right, Charlie Jackson. As you probably are very well aware, you have two minutes for your opening comments, and then throughout the evening, we'll have a series of questions. And if my mind is standing with my heart, we'll make sure you get two minutes for closing comments as well.
All right. That being said, we're going to start out this evening with opening comments from Ms. Ellens.
Thank you. I am Amber Ellens, and I am in this race because I believe everyone across our district deserves a voice in our school system, and I believe I'm best prepared to give them that voice. I entered this race because I am a true believer in public schools. I went to Texas Public Schools, my mom was a teacher, and I went to the University of Texas, earned my Plan II Honors Liberal Arts degree. Then I worked in broadcast journalism for several years before I went back to school to earn my Master's in Management from Northwestern University's Kellogg School. After that, I worked for United Airlines in both marketing and finance, so I'm ready to bring those experiences to the boardwork. When we moved to Austin, I was able to stay home. I was very blessed to stay home with my children, and so I put all of that education and that work experience into my volunteer efforts to help our schools and our kids. My children went to District Five schools of Brecker Woods, O. Henry, and Austin High. My daughter just graduated, and many of you know she is actually in college right now, and I'm very proud she is studying theater. My son just started high school at Austin High, and he is a special needs student. So he is dealing primarily with dyslexia and auditory processing issues. So as you can imagine, I had to advocate for them very differently from the very beginning. I still have a few more things.
You have a bit more time.
So, I jumped into PTA work. I was the president of the PTA at Brecker Woods and O. Henry. I was also on those campus advisory councils where I first kind of understood how our campus fit into the bigger district. So then when my daughter entered high school, I jumped into leadership of the Austin Council of PTA. And that's where, as the president, my job was to communicate and assist the parents and teacher members at all 109 PTAs across our district, and educate them on how to advocate for our students and their schools. So, I'm here today, running for the board to take that experience to the next level.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. I'd like to thank the closer to the mic. I'd like to thank all of the chambers of commerce for presenting this forum today, and for all of you that are participating here in the room, and those on television as well. I'm Charlie Jackson, I'm a native Texan. Our family's been going to public schools since there was a state here, and we're strong advocates of the public education system. My mother was a teacher, my son's mother was a teacher, and I've been involved in helping schools and public education much of my adult career. I also started out in Chamber of Commerce as an executive and economic development professional, so I understand a lot of the issues around the business community and why education is so important, not only to parents, teachers, and community members, but important to the business community as well. I've received both my degrees here at the University of Texas and run a high-tech consulting firm, so I've been involved, from the business standpoint, in trying to hire a well-educated workforce that's ready and prepared for high-tech in Austin. But the main reason I'm running But the main reason I'm running is that we need a school board that understands their role as a school board and can provide that kind of leadership. They have to understand budgetary, legal issues. They have to deal with the size of a school district that we have with nearly a billion-dollar budget and a very large workforce, and be able to study up on those issues and come to the table with concrete ideas. And also to provide the leadership to the community on behalf of the school, on behalf of the school district. We've had, in the past, school board members who don't necessarily focus as well on these types of issues from a governance and school board. And so, the reason I'm running, now that my sons are off in college, is so that I can focus and provide some of that expertise and leadership to the school board.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jackson. We're going to start our first question with you.
Sure.
The Austin Chamber, Hispanic Chamber, and African-American Chamber strongly support the direction AISD providing under the current leadership. Based on your understanding of the current leadership's performance, would you vote to initiate or take any action to change any part of the leadership team?
Well, I don't know Ms. Costarfin personally, but I've been very impressed when she came in. She brought a fresh, new set of ideas. I remember talking with Dr. Foggion about some of the ideas for the school district when he first came in here. She's been very creative. She's been willing to take on established standards and apply new energy to the school district. At the same time, though, what I've seen is that the... Whether it's through the leadership of our superintendent or through application of our school board, is that the district has gotten embroiled in lots of controversial issues, from school closure to the idea of charter school to single-sex schools. And my concern is that a lot of the good progress that's being made here in our district... We already rank in the NAAP as one of the top districts in the country for urban schools, and a lot of progress has been made. Blue Ribbon Schools, the Losa High School ranking in U.S. World Report. But we're not going to be able to improve our school district if we have divisiveness at the school board level and with our superintendent. Having been a employer and hired and fired many employees in my life, I understand, as Gina pointed out quite clearly, that we shouldn't get involved in those kinds of direct discussions at this point. And also, from a fairness standpoint, we need to be fair to all of our employees. We need... When somebody is hired for this school district, they need to know that they have a job, and that they can carry out their job, and that they'll have the flexibility and the guarantees that they can work well until they accomplish things. So, I'm very open to evaluating the superintendent based on her performance, but don't have any particular agenda in terms of the question that was passed directly.
Okay, all right, thank you. Ms. Ellens, same question to you.
Well, that is actually a little bit different than the question that they posed us.
That's called the liberty of the moderator. Actually, it's easier.
Well, it is in a way. As a board member, really, the only employee we have authority over directly is the superintendent. So, regardless, you know, of... So, her team is really up to her and who she chooses to work with her. So, with the superintendent in mind, it is my understanding that the board, the current members, are right now evaluating her performance from the past year and making a decision for moving forward. So, the specific issue about whether or not we increase her contract will not come back to the new board for a whole year. And at that point, we will all have different experiences and different... And true knowledge, actually, to answer the question on whether or not we would continue her contract. I will say that I do think there are lots of improvements that need to be made with regard to how we engage our community in the decision-making processes that we currently have today. With that in mind, though, I do agree, we are moving in the right direction. As Charlie pointed out, we are one of the top-performing large urban districts, not only in the state, but in the country. Our graduation rates are up. I'm very proud that more students than ever are attending college and other institutions of higher learning. And I have to give the current board and the superintendent some credit for that. And I think that's rooted in what they started and they're implementing with their strategic plan. So, that's very positive. And I do want to say one other thing. As a volunteer parent, very active in the district, one very visible thing that the superintendent and this administration has done is the Everyday Counts Campaign that they launched a few years ago, and is really increasing our attendance at our schools. And that furthers and increases the learning that's happening inside of our schools, and it also brings in more money to our campuses. And I'll tell you, when she started that, I had never heard of the correlation between funding and attendance. And I've been active, like I said, for 13 years. So, this was the first time that an educational leader really put that into perspective. And now, it's happening at a statewide level. Missing School Matters, you're going to start hearing that. And the whole state is working on attendance because it makes a difference for our students. And I'm proud that we were kind of part of the forefront of that.
All right, our next question, we're going to start with you, Ms. Ellens. What is your responsibility as District Two trustee in relationship to the role of the superintendent, of the board members, and community at large? That's going to be the first part of the question. The second part will be, what is the responsibility of each board member to the welfare of the entire district, whether the member holds an at-large position or represents a specific geographic portion of the district?
Okay. As a board member, it would be my responsibility to work with the superintendent, the other board members, and the community at large in partnership. The Texas Association of School Board actually defines a board member as this: "A guardian of the public trust, who serves as an advocate for the educational excellence for the community's youth and puts those interests first." I take that responsibility very seriously. And I would hold the superintendent and her administration accountable for that as well. I also think that if we, as a board, can keep that ideal in the forefront of all of our conversations, then we would be an unbeatable team. So, if any of you have been part of a PTA, you know that the vision of that association is to make every child's potential reality. So, it is vital that all of our education leaders are putting our children first and making the decisions and putting the resources to our children that help them succeed. I also believe we have a responsibility to truly engage and listen to our community, not only within our district as a District Five representative, but also as the district as a whole. It's what I've been doing for the past 13 years, at my schools in District Five, but also as the president of the PTA, the Austin Council, it was the whole district. So, I'm very aware that there are multiple viewpoints on... And right answers, actually, on what is the right answer to help our children. And so, I think it's important that we never forget that parents know kids. They know their own child better than anyone, and they must be part of any decision that is going to affect their child's future. So, on the single district versus district-wide, I think it is our responsibility to bring the interests, concerns, and wishes of our constituents to the conversation at every board discussion. But then, when it comes to the decisions, it is our responsibility to look at the district as a whole. I'm fully aware that we will have differences of opinion on what the right answer is. But I will treat that... I will advocate for my district while also doing so respectfully because I know that the decision of the majority of the board is the decision of the district.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. It's the responsibility of this board to serve the children that have been entrusted to our care, period. Now, how we get about doing that requires a board that is knowledgeable of finance, education, that knows what's going on in schools throughout the district, in Metz, in Travis, and not just in schools in my district, District Five, but throughout the district. I've worked and lived in various parts of Austin throughout my career, raised my children here, and now I have actually worked and provided instruction and technology in many of the schools throughout the district. So, I'm well-qualified to understand the various communities that we have that make up Austin, as well as many of the issues that are in our school. And that's the primary responsibility of the board, is to understand those issues, to be transparent with the community, to be working with community leaders, parents, and to be advocates on behalf of the children, and bringing that information to the dais every week. That's something I haven't seen that our board has been doing very well in the last few years. I attend board meetings regularly and have for many years, as well as watching on cable access. And what I've seen is a board that was not knowledgeable about what's going on out in the campuses. In fact, under the current superintendent, they were discouraged from visiting schools without getting prior notice to the superintendent. We really need board members who know teachers, who know principals, who are actively engaged in discussing and talking with the community and with parents out there on a regular basis, not just in one district of town, but throughout AISD.
Thank you. The next question, Mr. Jackson, we're going to start with you.
Sure.
In fiscal years 2012 and 2013, the state cut AISD funding by $60 million. AISD has to compensate for this reduction by making budget cuts and embarking on cost avoidance measures. Predictions have suggested that future budgets may require additional cuts. Assuming that the first layer of cuts have already been made, and the elected trustees of this election will be forced to make more difficult cutting decisions on what further cuts should be made, how do you prioritize where the money goes, where the cuts are made? And what values would you use to drive your budgetary decisions? And what is the largest budget you have ever been responsible for managing?
Well, let me start a little bit with the question, how it was framed prior to the meeting, about what areas would we cut? We are living in one of the wealthiest cities in the wealthiest nation on earth. We need to reframe our discussions and not be talking about, should we be slicing up the pie thinner and thinner and taking away from our budgets? We will have to deal with specific issues of the budgets. But what we need to be talking about and having a community conversation is, how do we make AISD, one of the top-performing school districts in the United States, in a short period of time, how do we reach the same kind of level and achievement that we see throughout various sectors of our business community and is lauded on the front page of magazines throughout the country? Don't you want an AISD that ranks in one of the top 10 in the United States? I ask you, as parents and business leaders, that's what you want. And so, what we need to do is we need to turn the conversation around, and we need to be talking about, what are we going to do creatively to improve our balance sheet here in this school district? I'm very pleased that the board was able to provide a temporary merit raises of 3% to our teachers within this budget and within these lean times. But we need to go further than that. What I see happening in San Antonio right now on the ballot this fall is that the community came together, business leaders, community civic elected leaders, and the school district, and they said, "We need to fund pre-K education." So, they came up with a creative plan, and they put it on the ballot to provide sales tax funding, if it passes, to fund pre-K in San Antonio. So, this is the example of the kinds of things we need to be looking at here in Austin. And we need to actually be engaging in a community conversation, not to cut our already lean budget, but to come up with new revenue sources so that we can really make our school district as good as it needs to be.
All right, thank you. Can you elaborate just a little bit and provide our Austin listeners with a little bit of insight on the size of a budget you have been responsible for?
Sure. And I've managed multimillion-dollar budgets and projects around the world, and mostly in the area of technology. The largest budget I personally managed was around $45 million. But I frequently manage budgets in the tens of millions of dollars for myself or for my clients.
And do you have a core value you can leave us with that you would use when you're making tough budgetary decisions?
Absolutely. There's nothing more important in our school district, from a financing standpoint, than providing the resources that teachers need every day in their classroom. There's absolutely no reason why we don't have enough manipulatives on some campuses or consumables materials or full-time language specialists, if that's needed for special populations, when we've got a district in a budget as large as what we have. My absolute priority is making sure that we instruct our administration here, and our superintendent, to find the resources that we need to meet the immediate needs for teaching and learning in every classroom in the school district.
Thank you. Ms. Ellens, same question to you, ma'am.
Okay. What is in the best interest of our students and our staff will drive my budgetary decisions. Our district is only as good as the people that are in it, whether that's the teacher leading the classroom, the principal leading the school, or the staff supporting those people, or the families that trust their children to us. So, we have to start there. I have been experienced managing budgets, both big and small. At United Airlines, it was $14 billion. At the Austin Council of PTA, it was $10,000. So, either way, I truly support, in theory, a very zero-based budgeting approach. I know that's not very realistic in a district this size, with the time that we're trying to work within, as well as the small resources that we have to really focus on the budget. So, I would agree to a kind of a hybrid approach, where we are looking at the budget in three different parts. We have required, by law, parts of the budget. We have areas that are not required by law, but are truly required to implement the law or to really implement our educational goals with integrity. And then the third part is, what is truly discretionary? And so, in approaching those, the values that I would use in making those decisions, because the second two items are true value judgments that will have to be made by our leadership, I will value the people. We are a people-driven business and a people-focused business, as education always is. And so, we need to make sure that our decisions have the least negative impact on our children, while they are also supporting, respecting, and valuing the work that everyone who touches our children provides every day. And thirdly, we do have to make sure that we can show our taxpayers that the dollars we are spending are spent most effectively and most efficiently to help our kids. As always, we need to engage our community in these decisions. If we're making difficult budget decisions, we need to realize that there are people out there with very valuable insights and experiences that may help us come to a better answer. So, we must listen to all the voices. And we need to do that so that we can prove to show our taxpayers that we are putting the money where our community values we put it.
And one follow-up question to you, Ms. Ellens. Recognizing that you represent a district, how would you go about developing consensus with your fellow trustees in ensuring that your district best interests are served financially, as well as the entire district?
Well, specifically financially?
Yes.
Well, right now...
So, many different ways you can cut a financial pie, right?
I know. Right now, we are... We currently financially break it up. It's a per student, it's kind of a staffing measurement that we use. In my particular district, our schools are actually on the lower end of the staffing formulas. We have well-performing schools. As Charlie pointed out, we have some of the more wealthy district people. And so, we are making that up through private and areas. I know the district is looking at changing the formulas of how we educate or how we fund our education. And I think that's a valuable exercise. But I would be concerned that we're committing to something before we're really ready, before we know the answers. And so, I do think equity is very important. And I think that it means different things to different people. And so, we have to be careful making a decision today on information we may not know moving forward.
Thank you. Next question, we're going to start with you. Same schools, or some of the schools, not necessarily the same schools, because when we talk about overcrowding, underutilization, overutilization can be different schools. Others have closed to empty classrooms. How do we best manage our resources in the time of fiscal discipline to ensure that all schools have appropriate utilization levels? Are there ever any circumstances that you would lead to your voting to adopt a plan that would close a school? If not, explain what your alternative strategy would be.
It's a hot button. Facility utilization is definitely important. As I mentioned before, we are stewards of the taxpayer's dollar. However, we cannot look at the current utilization numbers today in isolation. We've got to look at all the different factors. For instance, if we close a school, how is that going to affect student performance? How is it going to affect the neighborhood that that school resides in? And our Austin voters have been very clear that we value our neighborhood schools. So, that has to be taken into consideration when we're making these decisions. As I mentioned before, I also value the input from our people, our parents, and the community. And I think that if we can all come together to make these very difficult decisions, I would not be surprised that we would come up with some very creative solutions. I do want to be very clear, closing a school would never be my first choice. And if that school is successful, it would be my last resort. I was personally part of a campus, a school community, that feared for our future. When my daughter entered Brighter Woods at the beginning of the century, we were losing students quickly because of some testing reporting discrepancies at the district. And it really affected our attendance levels. And... And we tried to grow our attendance and the district was not real supportive. But our parents prevailed. And within just a few short years, we went from a half-empty, 50% transfer school to a very full campus closed to transfers. So I am very aware and have experienced the change in population numbers that can happen with a little bit of focus and a little bit of perseverance on the part of our communities. I would like to also mention that there's another facility utilization thing that comes up in conversations that has me concerned. And that's when the district mentions changing our transfer policies and adjusting our boundaries as one alternative or one item to consider. And those are two very different things. And before we make changes to any of those, I think we need to look at a school, understand why it's over capacity or under capacity. What are people liking about it that keeps them coming? Or what are they not liking that's sending them away? And we can work on that individual campus and make the changes that are needed rather than make a big district-wide decision that might fix this one problem over here but leaves this path of destruction in its wake.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jackson, same question?
Well, again, some of this is about framing and how we, how we discuss utilization of, of schools. I've worked with school districts throughout the state of Texas, large and small. I've worked with school districts that are smaller than some of our smallest elementary schools. They do just fine having smaller populations. Now, there's a effectiveness issue in terms of facilities that may be too old or that are overstaffed with administrators for the size of their school. But we don't have any reason to believe that in A I S D we need to be shutting down good neighborhood schools because they're underutilized. Again, we, we need to be taking a, a look and reframing that question. So I haven't seen any evidence, and I've been attending board meetings down here and went through the whole, all of the discussions about school closures. What happened is that the board abdicated its responsibility. The board didn't go to the facilities committee and ask them to come up with some savings by reducing the numbers of schools that we have here in A I S D. No, the direction that came, the, the lack of direction from the board led to our superintendent going to the advisory committee and setting and framing that discussion. Not about closing specific schools, but saying, "As a facilities committee, you're entrusted, we're asking you to come up with $3.5 million in savings." And so taking that charge, the committee then came up with some plans which included closing some schools. And so one of the things we need to do as a board member is we need to be very clear about the direction that we give the superintendent and our advisory committees. The, our advisory committees aren't set up at the pleasure of the superintendent and staff to serve them. They're set up at the pleasure of the board and to serve the direction of the board of directors. And so a lot of the issues that are being discussed and even on the committee that you serve, I wouldn't say have been directly, you, you've been given the charter by the board to move in those regards. The second thing I would say about, about specifically about these advisory committees is we need board members who are actively participating on those advisory committees and in those discussions so that they don't come to the dais with a plan that they haven't been involved with and they're not knowledgeable about.
Mr. Jackson, can you provide the Austin community with maybe one or two examples on if you would not close a school that is underutilized, what type of services would you consider that you think are important to the Austin community that you would add to that particular location in order to increase the utilization, utilization of that facility?
Well, as Mrs. Heno, or Mrs. Heno-Hose said earlier, the, the turnaround at Becker was very effective. And that was the, the inclusion of a dual-language program to attract more parents. We already have a lot of magnet programs and other kinds of things to attract people to various schools for various reasons. And notwithstanding any changes in campus boundaries, which, which is also being looked at, we need to encourage people more to go to underutilized schools. But we also need to deal with the issue of overutilized schools or, or schools that are getting overcrowded. One of the problems that we currently have is, is due to in-district transfers. And even some of the best schools in Austin where they've become overcrowded because of our in-district transfer policies. And when I talk to parents and administrators in those, those schools, they, they acknowledge the problem, but they really acknowledge the root of the problem. And that is, if we were serving every school in A I S D and every school was, had the resources and was performing well, then we wouldn't have some of these in-district transfer overcrowding situations occurring because families would be more encouraged to remain at the campuses that are already in their neighborhoods.
All right, thank you. We're gonna end our last question with you. This is my treasure chest question for the evening. How can we strategically position A I S D five to 10 years from now? So I'm gonna actually put your visionary hat on, because you know, oftentimes we're planning in a survival mode of the present but not necessarily looking out to the future. How do you envision that you would serve in a leadership role for the district to encourage them on how to approach such a process?
Well, well, one thing I really like, and despite a, a recent newspaper article where it looked like I was leveling criticism at the Chamber of Commerce, I really like the chambers, the, the Greater Austin Chamber of Commerce 2015 Plan, where it specifically maps out graduation rates that we would like to see from high school, the, the amount of, the percentage of, of students who will remain in college, the readiness for the high-tech labor workforce. Remember, I work in high-tech and I'm very much concerned that we, that we had, that I don't have to go abroad to, to find, to, to bring people here to, to work in, in my industry. And not only that, but it's an equity issue. We have an obligation and responsibility to people that are born and raised in Austin to provide the best education possible so that they can also go, enter the workforce and, and be part of this economic miracle that we have in Austin. It's very disingenuous of us as business leaders and community leaders to say, "Well, we'll import talent" when we have people right here willing to be trained and, and educated and, and participate in high-tech jobs.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Ellis, same question to you.
I think moving forward, our district really needs to be continuing its efforts to educate the whole child. That, to me, is where we're gonna make the most changes and the most improvements in what we're offering our students and our families in terms of education, but also our business community in terms of how they're gonna work. I think it's important that we strengthen our arts education, our sports opportunities, our special education resources, our career and techno, technology paths. The thing is, I think we need to value every one of the talents that our individual students are bringing to the table. And we need to be providing the opportunities that they need, whatever they are, to really strengthen those talents and, and be able to use them to, to work in our, our society for the rest of their lives.
And you, can you give us one or two ideals strategically? How, how would you approach making sure that that happens? So if it didn't happen today, five or 10 years from now, we would have some type of plan or roadmap in place to ensure that those ideals become a reality?
Well, I'm a big fan of the strategic plan process. And I would hope that we're continuing that, that visionary process to begin with because that's, and including our community in building that because that is going to drive those decisions and making sure that the whole child is part of that strategy.
All right. We had opening comments this, this evening from Ms. Ellis. So we're gonna have closing comments this evening from Mr. Jackson. Mr. Jackson, speak to the Austin community and give them some insight to why they should elect you to serve them in District Three.
Great, thank you, Mr. Pearson. And thank you, Austin community and Greater Austin community on the, on the TV tonight. I approached this race with two things in mind. One is that we need to challenge ourselves as a community to improve much better. And our education system is one of those things. So when I say that we wanna become one of the top 10 school districts in four years in the United States, I mean that. And we need to put the blocking and tackling in place. We have a strategic plan in place and we have a school board who says that they agree for, agree in many specific goals, but they're not addressing those goals specifically. And we no longer need business as usual. At the same time, I'll, I'll bring to mind the, the T C R P report on the inequities in funding and the challenges that we have in our school district. We, as a board, have ignored, using the status quo, we have ignored too many schools in this, in, in Austin. And we are not serving all of the students and the families in Austin. We've created a lifeboat strategy where some, some kids get rescued and they, they get to attend good schools and other schools are left floundering. And we need to challenge ourselves as a community, not only to do better as an educational system, but also to be equitable and fair and make sure that every child in Austin can succeed. And I don't think we will do that if we continue with the status quo the way it's been set forth.
Okay, thank you. And of course, if anyone has seen how long the ballot is, I don't wanna be a contributor to confusion. These two candidates are running for District Five. So make sure we clear that up, all right?
Do I get to say one last thing?
You absolutely do. It'd be my pleasure. Please, you have two minutes. Why should Austin elect you to represent them in District Five?
Well, I agree. Thank you very much for, for having us here today. I am all about communication and education. And this is a great opportunity to educate not only people in this room but the people in Austin about this very important race. And yes, it is District Five. And, and I truly believe that working in partnership with our parents, our teachers, our principals, our staff, our business communities and our neighborhoods is vital to improving our educational opportunities for our students. It's what I've been doing for the past 13 years, not only in our District Five schools. I know the teachers and the parents and the neighbors there. I know the issues that we're dealing with and what we would like to improve or protect. But I've also have the district-wide vision. As the president of the Austin Council of P T A, I also got to experience what is going on throughout the district. And, and I have some great successes in bringing our parents and our teachers and principals at all of our teams together to really start talking and building trust amongst themselves. So I think I'm fully prepared to deal with the issues and, and what's going to come up if you truly elect me for your District Five representative.
Thank you. Austin, I present to you your two candidates for District Five. To my left, Ms. Amber Ellens. And to my right, Mr. Charlie Jackson. We thank you both for your commitment and interest in serving our community. Please join me in giving them a round of applause.
At, at this time, if Ms. Brister Teesh would come forward. And as Ms. Teesh has come forward, let me remind everyone that early voting for A I S D elections begins on October the 22nd. Election Day is November the 6th. Candidate literature is available on the back table. And of course, we encourage everyone to participate and go out and vote and takes a voting partner with you. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you very much for having me here.
You're welcome. We are transitioning to our last discussion for the evening for District Three. It has been a plum-pleasing pleasure for me to serve as your moderator. Again, I'm Darryl Pierce, President, CEO of Snap Management Group. I have a statement that I've been asked to read for Ms. Christine Brister, who is unable to be with us this evening. So allow me to share a few words with you. And I'm sure there'll be additional information that will be released by Ms. Brister. The statement is as follows. Due to health issues, I am ceasing all activities related to my campaign for reelection to the Austin I S D Board of Trustees, District Three. This decision comes on the advice of my physician and in consultation with my family and friends. My health issues are not life-threatening but do prevent me from concentrating on the multiple demands of having a full-time day job, running a campaign, while also serving as a trustee. Along with all the responsibilities that come with being a mom and a wife, I can relate to probably half of those. I want to thank all of those who have supported and helped me during my term as board member and during my campaign. I'm proud of my service to the students and families and community of District Three over the past four years. We have done much to deal with the severe overcrowding and other issues that affect District Three schools. I have family attending schools in District Three. So I plan to remain active in education on the campus level. I want to send our well wishes and prayers out to the Brister family. And I'm sure the Austin community joins me in sending those prayers to her family. And we wish them the best in the future. She's not present, but I'd like to give her a round of applause at this time, please.
So before this evening, we have our candidate for District Three. So we're gonna have a one-on-one dialogue.
All right.
We're gonna go over the, the four questions that have been proposed. And I may even have a treasure chest question just for you.
Sounds good.
You have an opportunity for opening statement. Please give the Austin community a little bit of insight on who you are, why you would like to serve the Austin community in this capacity.
Thank you. And thank you, members of the Chambers of Commerce. And thank you for all of you who've hung in, in this discussion this long. I really appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Pierce, for being our moderator. I appreciate very much the, the chambers, the various chambers' interest in education in Austin because we are charged, the school district is charged with providing a workforce that can satisfy the needs of the businesses in Austin. And it's vital to the economy of Austin for us to have an educated workforce. I am Ann Tyke, and I'm a candidate for A I S D Board of Trustees, District Three. And District Three includes primarily the Lanier Vertical Team. And I am a 1970 graduate of Lanier High School. I'm very proud of that. I have lived in that neighborhood for 27 years. And I have been very active in the Neighborhood Association and taken an interest in what's going on with the safety and health of the students in that area. For the past seven years, I've been active in the North Austin Civic Association, the last three years as their vice president. I participate in the North Austin Coalition of Neighborhoods and in the North Austin Community School Alliance. I am the co-chair of the Downtown Cluster of Congregations and Social Service Agencies. And I serve on the boards of the Religious Coalition to assist the homeless and the Foundation for the Homeless. I am also a retired teacher, a retired A I S D teacher. Taught 27 years at Porter Middle School, which is now the Ann Richard School. And I have, for the last seven years since retiring, I have substituted in 24 of the district's middle and high schools. So I have kind of a, a, a big-picture view of what's going on, at least on the secondary level, in Austin. I think I would bring to the position of trustee, a community perspective through my work in my neighborhood in District Three. And I also have ties to other neighborhoods in Austin through some advocacy work centered around education and health and safety. And I would also bring an educator's perspective to the position of trustee. I am a candidate for A I C Board of Trustees because I want to use my leadership skills and energy to ensure that our students graduate in increasing numbers from our campuses. I also want to ensure that we attract and retain quality staff. And I want to ensure that the communities around our commu, excuse me, the communities around our schools are actively engaged in those schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That takes us to our first question. The Austin Chamber, Hispanic Chamber and African-American Chamber strongly support the direction of A, the direction of A I S D providing under the current leadership that the district is under. Based on your understanding of the current leadership's performance, would you vote or initiate any action to change any part of the leadership team or the direction that the district is being led in?
In my 27 years of teaching, I worked under four different superintendents and I have a good sense of how difficult that job is. They have to juggle lots of different policy issues, state, federal laws, financial concerns, et cetera. And I think that it would be premature, presumptuous of me to, to judge a, a leadership team at this point. I don't have enough evidence. I don't have enough experience working with the leadership team. But I would not want to state that I would unilaterally take steps to, and to not have that team around. I'm a firm believer in stability in administration. It's very important to our schools for them to have stable administrators. It's important to our district. So I would hesitate to judge our leadership team at this point and commit one way or another. It would be like for me to, to come into a classroom and, and look at a child or perhaps receive anecdotal evidence about a child's performance and then make a decision on that child just based on the anecdotal evidence. So I commend the leadership team in Austin, Dr. Karstafen in particular, for her dedication to her job, long hours that she puts into this job, the many different stakeholders she has to deal with. And I commend the, the direction that the, the district has taken under her leadership. I think we've made great, great strides in this, in this district. Our graduation rates are up. I think that's extremely important. We're working on attendance rates. And I, I live in a district, in District Three, where we have a huge challenge in getting our kids to school. So I appreciate the complexity of the job that our leadership team has. And I would not want to disrupt any progress that's being made in the district.
Thank you very much. Second question. What is your responsibility as a board member in relationship to the role of the superintendent, other board members and a community at large? And this is a two-part question.
Okay.
What is your responsibility of each board member to the welfare of the entire district? Whether the district holds an- whether the district holds an at-large position or represents a specific geographic portion of the district?
My relationship to the superintendent and to my other, my fellow trustees, should I be elected to that position, would be one of collaboration, team-building, providing guidance, policy guidance, making sure that I don't get too much into the nitty-gritty of everyday operations. That would not be my job. That would be the job of the superintendent and her leadership team. I would take very seriously my job, my role, as a conduit of information between my constituents and the board and the superintendent. I would not ignore the needs of the district as a whole. As I mentioned earlier, I have served in my last seven years as a substitute at 24 different secondary campuses. I have a pretty good idea of what's going well around town and what's not going so well. I think I could bring that perspective to my role as a trustee and offer some insight about programs that might be proposed for some of those areas of town. I think a trustee needs to make sure that all students are attending, that they graduate, that they go on to post-secondary education of some kind, whether that is college or career and technical education. I think that's extremely important, and you, as members of the business community, would be particularly interested in that career and technical education component. So, I think I've learned in my work with the North Austin Community School Alliance and the North Austin Coalition of Neighborhoods in my own neighborhood, to work collaboratively as a team and to look at the big picture and to see what's going well, to analyze what's going well, to find out what's going to stabilize. Family is one of the biggest issues I think that trustees need to be aware of, is that we have many unstable families in our communities, particularly in District Three and East of Austin, in East Austin. So, we need to work on that stabilization of families and make sure that kids stay in school and that they don't move around from school to school.
Thank you. Ms. Teak, understanding in fiscal years 2012 and 2013, the state cut AISD funding by $60 million. ASD had to compensate for this reduction by making budget cuts and embarking on cost-avoidance measures. Predictions have suggested that future budgets may require additional cuts. Assuming that the first tier of cuts have already been made, and the elected trustees of this election will be forced to make difficult decisions on what additional cuts may need to be made, how do you prioritize where money goes, where cuts should be made? And what values would you use to drive your budgetary decisions, and what is the largest budget you've had to manage directly?
As a community advocate and as a former teacher, I, my expertise, my values are driven by human capital. We start with our students. That is our primary human capital, and then we move on to their families and extended families. And beyond that, we move to teachers. We move to support staff, and that includes custodians. Some of the best support staff I had on my campus were custodians and the relationships they built with students there. Bus drivers, librarians, counselors, administrators, they're all extremely important. So, I would hesitate to make any cuts in human capital. That would be my number-one priority, is human capital. Maintaining what goes on in the classroom and the learning environment of the school, making sure that it's quality, that it invites students to learn, that it invites teachers and support staff to be there, to want to work there. I would focus on that primarily. I understand the financial strictures that the school district are under. I understand completely the funding issues that are going on in the state and how that affects our particular school district. Although I've never managed a multimillion-dollar budget, I think the only really budget I've managed is my household budget, I would venture to say that there are many elected officials who have never managed multimillion-dollar budgets and yet provide a big-picture perspective to what should be going on. And in the school district, board trustees, since they are responsible for policy guidance and not day-to-day operations, I think that I could bring a big-picture perspective to the school district and make some decisions about cuts that would hopefully enhance our education of all of our students and avoid damaging our human capital.
Thank you. Understanding that some of our schools are overcrowded, that's not a secret. Others have closed to empty classrooms. How do we best manage our resources in this time of fiscal discipline to ensure that all schools have an appropriate utilization level, or at least a balanced one, right? Are there ever any circumstances that would lead to you voting to adopt a plan that would close a school, and if not, explain what your alternative strategy would be?
I have to echo what the other candidates have said. Closing a school is not going to be my top priority. However, having been in the district as a substitute for seven years and seen all the different campuses and seen instances where campuses were underutilized and thought about that for quite a while, I would be open to conversation about how we could restructure some of our schools so that they are more attractive to students if we have underutilized schools. By the same token, I would not hesitate to advocate for the building of schools. In fact, there are going to be two schools built in my neighborhood, one on East Runburg and one on West Runburg, because we have quite a few elementary campuses that are over 900 students each, and Lanier High School is over 1,100 students. And so, I would keep both of those things in mind, building new campuses, as well as looking at what we can do to utilize schools that are not utilized. Several programs have already been mentioned, the dual-language program as a way of attracting students back to campuses. But I would also want to analyze why students are not attending or choosing to attend, or their families are not choosing to attend a neighborhood school. I think neighborhood schools are extremely important. They are like the foundation of communities, basically. A lot of activities in the community circle around that school, around those schools. And so, I would want to know what is preventing parents, what is keeping them away from attending or sending their kids to those schools. So, I would definitely engage the community in genuine conversation around the possible closing of a school, and that would be my last resort.
And recognizing that you're representing District Three, how would you work with your other colleagues who not only represent districts, but are representing the community at large, to try to encourage and ensure that there's a balanced conversation around how best to approach this very sensitive issue?
First of all, I would bring some education to the board about what the needs are of District Three. I mentioned overcrowding issues. We are in the particular neighborhood that I live in, we're probably the second-most dense area of town. So, I would want to educate my fellow board members about them. I would want to take them on a field trip. I would want them to come out to my neighborhood and look at the schools that are over 900, look at the portables that are mushrooming all over the place. I would also want them to take a look at what's going well at those schools, too, because we have some exemplary schools in our area where we have staff, administration, doing some admirable jobs, juggling, excuse me, sorry, 30 to 40 different languages, in one case, at Lanier High School. So, educating the board about the needs of District Three, taking them out to see, and I think that's something all board members should be engaged in, is looking at the schools. Get on the school campus, look and see what's going on, take a walk through the schools, and get a sense of what the learning climate is like. Then, working with my fellow trustees to decide what's best for those schools that are affected.
Okay, thank you. And my last question of the evening, my treasure chest question just for you. Performance is oftentimes a very sensitive discussion. How do we measure performance? How do we measure performance of teachers? How do we measure performance of a school district? What is your vision for, what would be the best method or methodology to use to effectively ensure that we're measuring the movement of our school district successfully, as well as measuring the leadership that's being provided by the trustees?
I think we need to look bottom line at our graduation rates, and we also need to find a way to track our students to see what they're doing after graduation. I think that's probably the baseline of evaluating how successful your schools are. Beyond that, we can look at performance on a classroom basis. We can look at how schools are doing, but we need to have a portfolio of options to evaluate how schools are doing. I am not a proponent or a fan of high-stakes testing. I think testing is necessary, accountability is necessary. However, in the education field, over the last 30 years, we have come up with a portfolio of ways to evaluate how teachers and students are performing, and I think we need to implement that portfolio in our schools. I think that's basically it.
Austin, I present to you your candidate for District Three, Ms. Ann Teak. I also want to thank all the other participating candidates this evening. And before I do that, did you have anything else you want to leave the Austin industry with to give them a good reason why they should check your box on Election Day?
I do. I am particularly interested in career and technical education. I think that that is an area that has, that needs more emphasis in our schools. I think that we need to be looking at our connections with Austin Community College and getting our kids moved into areas that they have to offer so that they can move in a career direction. I think we need to start working on career education in a more strategic way at our various high schools, so that we do have kids who are engaged, who want to be in the schools, who find value in their instruction and their curriculum, and eventually will go out and be able to find a job here in Austin and keep our economy strong. So, I think I would offer that as an emphasis in my service on the board. I'm also willing and able to engage the community. I think I have some skills around that. I know quite a few community leaders, and I think that we need to bring our best minds to some of the, to solve some of the problems that we have in our schools. So, an engaging curriculum, focusing on career and technical education, in working with neighborhood leaders, truly engaging them in our conversations around our schools. I look forward to working collaboratively with everybody who's interested in making sure our students are successful.
Austin, there you have it. Our last word from our last candidate. Please join me in celebrating and thanking all of our candidates for their willingness to serve our community.
Thank you.
Again, I want to thank Austin ISD for providing the venue for this event, providing security, broadcasting the forum. Thank you to our co-hosts, the Greater Chamber of Commerce, Greater Austin Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, the Capital City African-American Chamber of Commerce, and Austin ISD for broadcasting live this event. Now's your turn, viewers. Talk with your candidates, go vote, exercise your right to vote, and take a family member or friend with you. Early voting starts on October 22nd. Election Day is November the 6th. Thank you for turning in, and I bid you a good night.
Thank you. (applause)